I would like to welcome everyone to the City of Everett Planning Commission meeting on June 16th, 2015, and we'll start out with a roll call.
Chair Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Jordison.
Here.
Commissioner Beck.
Here. And next is approval of our meeting minutes from June 2nd. Have the commissioners had a chance to review the minutes? Any comments on the minutes? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of June 2nd? Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Beck.
Yes.
Commissioner Jordison.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Chair Stewart.
Yes. Thank you. The minutes are approved. And next would be reports from any commission members. We'll start down with Commissioner Beck. Any? No report. Commissioner?
No report.
Nothing for me tonight, thanks.
And I don't have anything for the good of the order either. And no committees, so staff, do you have anything to report tonight?
Alan Giffen, city staff. Just one thing in that is the marijuana regulations that the Planning Commission has recommended. We will be briefing the city council on June 24th, and we will have the public hearing, third and final reading on July 8th. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. And then we do have an opportunity for members of the public here tonight who would like to address the Planning Commission about anything other than what's on our agenda. Seeing none, we'll then move along to item number one, which is a public workshop on the City of Everett's Conference of Plan update. And I'll turn it over to the Planning Director.
Thank you, Alan Giffen, Planning Department. We wanted to have another workshop for the Planning Commission to bring you up to date, particularly for Commissioner Beck, who has missed some of this stuff prior to her appointment to the commission. And we also wanted to bring you up to date with some schedule information that Mary will present in a little while here. This won't be a lengthy presentation, but we want you to feel free to ask any questions that you have. This will be review for several of you, and a few updates as we go along here. So for the public's benefit, probably more so than the Planning Commission, the Conference of Plan will consist of several elements, those that are listed on the screen here: land use, shoreline land use, housing, transportation, economic development, and several others that must be included in a comprehensive plan. Some of these are optional elements. We are adding this update, the climate change element and the marine port element. All the other elements that you see there are, I guess I've got marine port element on there twice. We're only doing it once, however. All of the other elements are within the current Conference of Plan. Wanted to talk about the Everett Planning area a little bit, and on this map, you can see the gray shaded areas are the areas that are outside the city limits, yet are within our planning area. In the countywide planning policy parlance, it is the MOOGA, or Municipal Urban Growth Area, would be the areas outside the city limits. And those are areas that we are also planning for, but that are outside the city limits and may be annexed over time. For the most part, we're just adopting the county's land use plans for those areas. But over time, several of those areas could be incorporated or annexed into the city. The numbers that I'm going to talk about tonight with regard to growth targets, however, are only for the current city limits. And so even though they'll be projected out 20 years into the future, and we know that the boundaries will probably be different by then, the numbers that we talk about are for the area within the current city limits. So we started the process by conducting an audit of our existing Conference of Plan and Development Regulations for consistency with the Growth Management Act and for changes to state law that dictated that we needed to make some changes to our own policies and regulations. We also had probably more significant than changes to state law, the adoption of the Vision 2040 Regional Growth Strategy in 2008 by the Regional Council for the four county region. And those consist or comprise the multi-county planning policies with which the countywide planning policies must be consistent. And therefore, the countywide planning policies were updated in 2011, and those also dictate some changes to our Conference of Plan and some growth target-related changes that we'll be talking about. And just as important as any of those audits, the public input and feedback from the Planning Commission is very important for incorporating into our plan update, and we've had a good public outreach process. I'll cover that in another slide. In the Vision 2040 document, the Regional Growth Strategy, it really builds upon the Vision 2020 Plan document that was superseded with the passage of Vision 2040. And that growth strategy is to intend to concentrate growth within urban areas, particularly larger cities such as the City of Everett that are in the hierarchy of centers within Vision 2040, the metropolitan city. Other cities that within the region that are also metropolitan cities would include Bremerton, Tacoma, Bellevue, and Seattle, as well as Everett. Within the City of Everett, we also have two regional growth centers: the Central City Downtown Growth Center, which will be changing the boundaries of that from the current Conference of Plan, and the Southwest Everett Manufacturing Industrial Center that includes Payne Field and Boeing. That's regionally designated by the PSRC and is intended to be a major job center within the region. The transportation part of that strategy is to connect these regional centers with high-capacity transit, light rail, or in the case of Kitsap County, there will not be light rail, but high-quality frequent transit service. There are some additional new policy areas in Vision 2040, including healthy communities for encouraging a healthy living environment and physical activity that would lead to people's well-being and increasing public safety. There's also a call for climate change element, addressing greenhouse gases and air quality within our Conference of Plans as a result of Vision 2040. For public involvement, we have had a pretty consistent and steady public outreach process. We've made presentations to not only the council of neighborhoods, but a number of different neighborhood groups. Any group that is interested in having us come and present to them, business groups or property owner groups or different interest groups. We've had quite a few workshops, as you are aware, including some where we had some public participation exercises out at Evergreen Middle School, for example, and at Everett Station. We've had the usual information posted on the planning website and using notification lists to keep people apprised of milestones and opportunities for comment. We started with an online and paper survey, just to gauge people's opinions about different topics related to planning, and got a lot of good feedback out of that. Some of the feedback that we got through the, both the workshops and the survey, people were, wanted to discourage much change in established single-family neighborhoods, and not a lot of additional growth. However, people were very supportive of additional growth, both housing growth and job growth in a number of areas, through redevelopment and infill. Particularly for housing, it would, the areas that people felt would be good areas to concentrate redevelopment in higher densities would be in the greater downtown area and along our arterial corridors, which happen to be transit corridors. And for job growth in the same areas, plus additionally, the Southwest Everett Industrial Area and other industrial areas such as Riverside Business Park, Port of Everett, and some of our waterfront industrial areas. Planning Commission feedback, well, this is some of what we've heard either from you or in conversations with you or from public workshops. And that is that we shouldn't let unrealistic growth targets drive our thinking, that the growth must include consideration of the quality of future growth, not just numerical targets, and to focus first on what's best for our community and those changes that will make the city more livable, more attractive to investment, also considering what services and facilities the city can afford to provide and what levels of services our community will support. And that, the last one, staff has added, based upon the serious budget discussions that have been occurring over the past couple of years with particularly the city council, that we will only do what we can afford to do, and we won't, in the Conference of Plan, commit the city council to doing things that they are unable to afford. So those are some of the feedback that we've heard through this process. We've also developed three growth alternatives, a high, medium, and a lower growth alternative, and I'll talk just a moment about each of those. The alternative one is the higher-growth alternative, and that's based on numbers from the PSRC's Regional Growth Strategy. These are guidance numbers, they're not targets from the Regional Council, but they suggest that in 2035, 20 years from now, that the current city limits should support or actually have a population of nearly 165,000 and an employment level of over 145,000. Alternative two, which is based on a more modest growth scenario and is consistent with the resolution that's adopted by the city council in 2013, a lower population target of 143,000 and employment level of 140,000. And the third alternative is really just keeping the existing plan and extending it out an additional 10 years from 2025 to the horizon of 2035. And that would have a lower population of 133,000 and actually employment a little bit higher than the alternative two. And of course, today's population is approximately, well, this is dated a little bit, we're at about 105,000 today and with an employment level of about 95,000. Those are still significant growth figures, any one of those alternatives. And so wanted to show or talk a little bit more about those targets, and I'll have a graph here to share with you in a moment. We do have adequate land capacity within the comprehensive plan for those higher-growth targets of 165,000 for population. However, we just do not believe that the economics will be there to support those higher-growth targets, both in terms of the amount of development that would be required, number of dwelling units that would have to be built, and a number of factors that would probably change some of the fundamental economics of our community, such as much higher rents in order to make high-density buildings, high-rise residential structures financially feasible. There are no penalties if our adopted growth targets are not realized. We just have to be able to demonstrate that we have the capacity for our growth targets. We can't really control the rate of development. That's really out of the hands of government. We can do things that influence that, but it's the private sector and the economy that will drive how much growth we have in terms of employment and population. There's also significant regional transportation invested, investment needed beyond what the city is able to provide. So things like sound transit, State Department of Transportation facilities that really need, in some instances, significant upgrades, for example, US-2 improvements to Interstate 5 are needed in order to support high levels of job growth in the city, as well as population growth around some of our growth centers. We just do not believe that that type of, that rate of development and economic growth is going to occur to the extent needed to hit those high-growth targets. And higher-growth targets will also require more infrastructure costs being borne by the city, in particular sewage treatment capacity. And we are recommending the alternative two targets when we issue our draft Conference of Plan, which, and Mary will talk about that schedule in a little bit. Wanted to use this graph to show you the, or to illustrate the point about the amount of growth that would be necessary for us to hit these different targets. The first 12 bars here in this graph represent the number of dwelling units that have been permitted in the City of Everett from 2000 to 2012. This graph was actually prepared by Snohomish County, and it shows that we averaged, over in this column, for that 12-year period, about 330 dwelling units per year. Some years, almost nothing, some years, a pretty high number of dwelling units, about 800 or more. In order to realize that 165,000 target, we would have to average every year for 20 years, over 1,100 dwelling units per year. That is about three and a half times what we have been averaging the first decade into the new millennium. In order to hit that 143,000 target, we would have to average about 714 dwelling units per year for 20 years. And so while that is still much higher, more than double what we have been averaging, we feel that's at least feasible in terms of our capacity and with a few of the economic factors that would need to occur, perhaps that is doable. We do not think that the 1,100-plus dwelling units per year is actually achievable every year on average for 20 years. So that's one reason why we are recommending alternative two. There are a number of other issues, planning issues for the plan update, including demographic and household changes, household incomes, the millennial generation and some of the impacts that generation will cause as it ages, and transportation costs will certainly affect how we grow, and the timing alignment and station locations for the light rail system, if and when it gets to Everett within the planning period. When it comes to the aging population within Snohomish County, the proportion of people over 65 in Snohomish County will double after 20, I think actually after 2040, to about 21 percent. It's at 10 percent currently within the county. And an older population typically will have a greater demand for housing in urban and central locations. There will be less demand for a single-family detached housing from this portion of the population, which is more dependent on transit commuting, or not commuting, but traveling by transit and walking. And this age cohort typically drives fewer miles per year and has a lower percentage of car ownership. So those trends suggest a need for more multifamily housing in central cities and near transit service, which would support that type of development in Everett, probably more so than other communities within Snohomish County. And changes in our household characteristics, the single-person households in Everett have doubled since 1970, I should say in Snohomish County, have doubled since 1970. A lot more single-person households, households with children under 18 have dropped from 50 percent of households to 30 percent of households. So smaller households, less, fewer households with children. The average household size has decreased for the county in general, however, the anomaly in Everett is that it has remained constant at about 2.38 for the last three decades. And while that has been an anomaly, we suspect that that trend will change as 90 percent or more of our housing in the future will be multifamily, which tends to be smaller and has a lower household size on average than single-family detached. So a much greater proportion of our housing stock will be multifamily in the future. So the trend suggests, that trend suggests less need for larger dwellings in the city. Everett has a median household income that's about two-thirds the Snohomish County average. The Snohomish County average, including Everett, is that $68,000 per household. And we do not see that trend changing anytime dramatically in the future, which suggests a need for more affordable housing types and affordable transportation choices in Everett than perhaps other communities within the county. Millennial generation is the largest generation in America now, at about 4 million larger than the baby boom generation. And it'll be interesting to watch this generation and their lifestyle choices as they grow older, the occupations that they choose, where they choose to live. Currently, a lot of the millennials have large college debt. They tend to prefer an urban lifestyle more so than their parents' generation. They also tend to drive less than their parents did at the same age, and they're getting married later and having children later than their parents' generation did. All of those trends suggest a need for more affordable multifamily housing in cities with good transit service. However, as more millennials form households, start families, we'll just have to see what some of their housing preferences and travel preferences will be in comparison to other generations. But the, at least the trends at this point suggest that that large age cohort will prefer a more urban lifestyle. We have received a draft of the transportation element. You had a workshop where our consultant presented some of the existing conditions. The draft is under review by staff and undergoing quite a bit of revision, the policies. So we're not ready to present that to you and will not be ready to present that to you until the second meeting in July. But basically, the vision for the transportation system would be to safely serve all users across all modes within the city and increasing emphasis on non-motorized and transit services within the city. The preliminary draft of the transportation element identified about $440 million worth of improvements required over a 20-year planning horizon, and not including the light rail system, which would add significantly to that. And that would include funding from the city, as well as outside sources such as grants or DOT projects and developer contributions. The draft of the comprehensive plan includes a proposed light rail alignment, conceptual light rail alignment, and station locations that the city would prefer to see in order to serve our growth centers in Southwest Everett, the Boeing-Payne Field Manufacturing Industrial Center, and our downtown Everett Station area Metropolitan Center. As well as, if the budget will support that, we would like to see the light rail extending north along Broadway up to the college area, where Everett Community College and Washington State University will be growing. And the arrow pointing off to the north toward Marysville is for future phases beyond Sound Transit III, where we certainly will encourage the expansion of the district to serve Marysville Arlington and areas to the north of the city. And so we feel that that alignment is much more beneficial to Everett than an I-5 alignment, which really doesn't serve growth centers in Everett very well. It does a great job of serving employers in communities to the south of us, but really makes Everett kind of a pass-through for commuter traffic rather than a destination for our growth centers where the regional vision says we should be growing. And its future is uncertain because at this time, first of all, we don't know, we don't have a schedule for when it might get to Everett. The light rail under Sound Transit Phase II will reach Linwood by 2023, and that's the end of the line under Phase II. In order to go beyond Linwood, Phase III would have to be approved by the voters, and before that can happen, the legislature must allow Sound Transit to increase or provide additional taxing authority, and it would have to be supported by the voters potentially in 2016. If not in 2016, it's likely that maybe in 2020. The conventional wisdom is that it's best to go out to the vote during a presidential election year. The light rail alignment is a big decision. Station locations, we're not sure how many will be in Everett and where they will be located. Those are some important decisions that we'll have to work closely with Sound Transit as they develop the plan for Phase III. And beyond Phase III, will it expand to the north? Certainly not within the planning horizon of this Conference of Plan update. I'm gonna hand it off to Mary now, and she'll talk about the remaining several slides.
Excuse me. The comprehensive plan includes two new elements. One's the climate change and sustainability element, and the other is the marine port element, which I'll talk about in a minute. We developed a detailed background report on climate change issues related to what the city has done, some of the science behind it, what actions the city has taken, and what some other local jurisdictions have done, and use that report as the basis for the element. The element has to be consistent, as Alan said earlier, with the Vision 2040 and countywide planning policies. So we've also evaluated those policies, and the policies call for preparation of climate action plans for Everett. The city's done a municipal climate action plan that only looks at activities of the local government and what their impacts are and what they can do. The policies talk about expanding that to set goals for reductions in greenhouse gases and provide more specifics for planning for what actions the city will take. It also calls for looking at a community-wide climate action plan that addresses the community at large. And it also talks about working with other jurisdictions to, or potentially combine to do some of those climate action plans. It also includes actions that the city could take to reduce emissions of greenhouse gases from a variety of methods, and also actions to adapt to the impacts of climate change. And there's overlap with a bunch of the other elements. So for example, utilities element includes actions that the utility division can be taking to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and adapt. So it's not all in this specific element. The marine port element was prepared in response to a request from the Port of Everett. There was a new law that allowed preparation of these elements for ports of specific sizes, and it was optional for the Port of Everett, but they proposed to have this included. The intent is to ensure that local land use decisions are made in consideration of economic contribution of international container ports, related industrial lands, and transportation systems. And the plan focuses, or this element focuses, on the main terminal area, port terminals south of Everett Avenue, down to about Pigeon Creek where the trail ends. They're public access, trail runs along the east side there. And it also includes a Mount Baker Terminal, which is at the western end of the city limit adjacent to City of Macalteo, along Port Gardner Bay. Since this was prepared and presented to Planning Commission before, we have made modifications that, to that, based on comments from Planning Commission that addressed, you know, Commissioner Sand requested stronger language on public access, and there were comments made about addressing light emissions odors, collaboration with other jurisdictions, and addressing the proposed expansion of the south terminal with specific policies. And we have, we are preparing a document that actually responds to all the comments that Planning Commission has made on all the elements, and we'll be presenting that to you when we provide you with the drafts of the elements and the draft EIS. So you can, you'll be able to see how we responded. So you can, you'll be able to see how we responded. The port also requested some modified language in there related to a land use impact protection area, overlay area around the port to address issues such as making sure that people know that the port is going to, is permitted to have higher noise levels than, say, you would in a residential zone. So, so those types of policies are included in the element. We're also updating a variety of regulations, probably the most changes are in the critical area regulations. I think last, last meeting you, Alan presented some of the other changes to the definition of family, and I forget what the other one was, but those are all part of these actions that are being taken forward with the comp plan update to ensure that we're consistent with state laws. Under critical area regulations, we're required to include best available science and to look at that again in these comprehensive updates. So we've researched the new science that's come up since we did our last update. And we, the primary revisions are related to wetlands, and we've, are implementing guidance that came from the Department of Ecology regarding updates to their documents on wetlands. Includes a new wetland rating system. We'll be amending the buffers to be consistent with that new rating system. The scores have been reduced, so the new buffers just relate to what the lower scores. There'll be options for using a new method for mitigation ratios, instead of using the specified ratios in our regulations. There's an option for using NLU fee mitigation, and we'll also be referencing a new Planning Director interpretation that's been adopted since the last update related to implementation of biological assessments in floodplain areas. I'll talk about that a little bit. So in 2010 FEMA, I'll go back to the, to the PDI, but in 2010 FEMA issued new preliminary draft floodplain maps that used, that are more accurate than the 2005 maps that have been adopted. But FEMA has never finalized those 2010 maps. And the 2010 maps ended up adding quite a few areas in the city to the floodplain. A lot of them are really tiny areas, you know, just along the edges, and then there's some larger areas out off of, say, the railway avenue area that added quite a bit to the floodplain. And Ecology recently issued guidance saying that they, because the maps, the 2010 maps are more accurate, that it's best available science to go ahead and start regulating using those maps prior to the time they're adopted by FEMA. So we are looking, evaluating that in the draft EIS, the options of whether or not we should start regulating those areas now or wait until the maps are adopted. And last night, we had a meeting with property owners that are affected, and we've provided the property owners notice so that they'll be able to comment during the comment periods on the draft EIS and the updates as to whether or not we should be regulating those areas. And we haven't taken a position yet on staff as to what we're going to recommend. We're just waiting to see what kind of feedback we get from property owners and the public. And one of the issues about whether or not we should regulate those now goes back to the Planning Director interpretation that we're going to be referencing. It was prepared based on, as a result of a biological opinion that National Marine Fisheries issued due to a lawsuit saying that the federal flood insurance program adversely affected habitat for endangered species in our area, specifically shenix salmon and orco. And the biological opinion said, yes, it did affect the habitat, adversely affect the habitat, and it required local governments to go out and prepare and to show how we were going to meet the standards that FEMA and National Marine Fisheries came forward with to reduce those impacts. And this PDI set, Planning Director interpretation sets forth how we're going to, the additional requirements we will have in floodplains related to meeting those standards. And the two main things that it requires, it requires a biological assessment. The applicant has to hire a biologist to prepare an assessment that looks at what the impacts of the proposal are to that floodplain habitat for endangered species. And it also requires compensatory storage for any fill that's put in the floodplain. So if you're going to fill, this is a new requirement, you have to go find a place to excavate to create new storage areas to replace that. So, let's see. So some of the pros of regulating, going ahead and regulating these areas now is that we would ensure that new development in these areas is flood-proofed. And when the new maps are adopted, it's very likely that these areas will be in those final floodplain boundaries. And if they're not elevated above floodplain elevation, they could have exorbitant flood insurance requirements or not be able to get flood insurance. So if we regulate them, we can require them to meet standards for elevating above the floodplain. And then it would also ensure that, that the development in these areas does address the impacts to floodplain habitat and storage. The cons of regulating now are that it will increase the cost and complexity for development. It requires that the applicants to hire someone to prepare the biological assessment and to, it's a, it's a larger permitting process, so it'll take much longer to get through. And then it also requires them to construct that compensatory storage. And in many cases in Everett, that's going to be very difficult to do because you'll have properties that are separated from the floodplain or from the river by other properties, so they don't have direct connections to the river. And latest guidance from FEMA is that these replacement storage areas should be at the same elevations as the areas that you're filling, which is going to make it difficult. And most of the areas that are affected by this are pretty poor habitat right now compared to what you think of as typical floodplain. These are areas that have been old industrial sites. A lot of them don't have any vegetation on them, or they'll, they have industrial buildings Anyway, we are waiting to hear back from the property owners and feedback from the public as part of this process to figure out whether or not we will regulate those areas now or The other area that we're looking at is the Everett Station area. Back in 2013, we brought forward a proposal to Planning Commission to allow residential use outright in the Everett Station area rather than requiring a site-specific plan development overlay rezone to address those issues. And in 2013, Planning Commission voted to postpone action and to add this item to the, this 2015 docket cycle. So we are now looking at it again. And the draft EIS will have a lot of the background documents and environmental reviews and stuff that were prepared in the past, and we'll be addressing it in the main part of the document as well as appendices. But back in 2013, some of the issues that the property owners raised at the Planning Commission meeting was from a variety of perspectives, but ranged from the changes is not needed, to the density and bonus standards create uncertainty for what you can build or what's going to be built next to you, the density's too low. There was concerns regarding the proposed density bonuses for below-grade parking, transfer development rights, and affordable housing. And there was a comment about the need for more flexibility in how parking is provided in the area. So based on some of those comments, we've come up with a new alternative for looking at density to bring forward. So we'll bring forward the original proposal, which was based on the Evergreen Way standards. It has a maximum height limit of 80 feet, which was what was proposed by Everett Transit in the initial application. It would have a base density of 58 dwelling units per acre, and you could increase those densities if you provided bonus elements. And there is a variety of different bonus elements that could be provided. The new alternative is based on the B3, the downtown zoning area, and it uses floor area ratios. Now, there's a variety of floor area ratios downtown, depending on which party downtown you're in, but this proposal would use the same FAR as the areas that allow the 80-foot height limit, which is a floor area ratio of three outright, and you could get, go up to four with bonus elements. And the bonus elements in the downtown, there's a lot more of them provided, but, and they're different from what's in the Evergreen Way standards. I just wanted to provide a couple, and there'll be a lot more information on this in the EIS, including a description of all the bonus elements for the alternatives. But these are some examples of recent projects that have been completed in the E1 Zone and the B3 Zone. The E1 Zone, the latest project is a senior housing project at 8830 Evergreen Way. And I'm not sure if it's finished construction yet, but it's pretty darn close if not. And it had, so it had a base density of 58 units per acre, but it provided affordable housing units for its bonus element, 21 units, and it ended up with a density of 73.4 dwelling units per acre. So that's kind of an example of what could be provided if, under the alternative that had the 58 dwelling units per acre and the 80-foot height limit, the Evergreen Way standard. In the B3 Zone, got three projects listed here. The first is the Scott Dell Project at Hewitt and Rucker that's under construction right now. It had a base floor area ratio of three, and it provided a bonus element of below-grade parking and got up to a density of 159 dwelling units per acre. So with the bonus, it ended up with the FAR of 3.25. The Farmer's Market Building at Hewitt Wall, that actually had a higher, actually, I'm not, I'm not, it could go up, the proposal that we're doing for Everett Station would only allow you to go up to a 4.0 floor area ratio. So this one is a little, ended up a little bit higher at 4.5 FAR, and they provided three bonus elements, which was the below-grade parking, publicly accessible seating, and then an interior atrium that was accessible to the public also. And that ended up at 127 to 165 dwelling units per acre, depending on whether or not you include the hotel site as part of that. With the hotel, it was 127 units per acre, and if you just count the main Farmer's Market Building, it was 165 dwelling units per acre. And then the last example I have is Potla Village at Pacific and Rucker Grand area. It had a base floor area ratio of three, and it got up to 3.18 using the bonus element of below-grade parking and ended up at 150 dwellings per acre with a height of 55 feet. So those are some examples of the types of projects that you could get using the two alternatives. And there still could be variability, additional variability, depending on, you know, which bonus elements people provide, size of units, and et cetera. So more information coming on that, and we have a meeting with the Everett Station area property owners next Monday night, so we'll be making sure that they're aware of these changes so that they can comment on them during the EIS and public hearing process. And then the schedule, we are not going to be finished by June 30th, which is the timeframe specified in the Growth Management Act. We just received the transportation element, the draft, for in-house review and are commenting on that right now. There's been some delays related to that. At this point, we're looking at July 21st to have a presentation to Planning Commission on the transportation element by the consultants. We hope to have the draft EIS issued right around the same timeframe to start the 30-day comment period on that. Hopefully, a little bit, we'll have that done a little bit before the 21st. Then on August 4th, there will be a Planning Commission workshop on the draft EIS to take public testimony and also see if Planning Commission has any feedback at that point. Then September 15th is the draft, or our target date for Planning Commission having a public hearing on the comp plan and regulations. So the FEIS will be issued after the 30-day comment period ends, and then Planning Commission will have that information when they make, to make a decision on the comp plan and the regulations. And then October is the likely timeframe for city council adoption. So that's all I had. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions at this time? We do have one person who has signed up to speak. So if there's anybody else in the audience who would like to speak to the Planning Commission tonight about the comprehensive plan update, make sure you fill out this sheet. Should we hear from our one person who signed up and then see if you've got some questions? Okay. Kristin Kelly, I'd like to invite you to step up to the podium, and if you wouldn't mind for the record, introducing yourself and say your address also.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So I'm Kristin Kelly, and I represent Futurewise and Pilchuck Audubon Society. I'll talk about that in a minute. My address is 1429 Avenue D, number 532, Snohomish, Washington, 98290. So I am the Snohomish Skagit Program Director for Futurewise and the Smart Growth Executive Director for Pilchuck Audubon Society. So for those of you who don't know anything So, for those of you who don't know anything about my organizations, I really haven't been up before you very often. Futurewise is a statewide organization working throughout Washington State to create livable communities, protect our working farmlands, forest, waterways, and to ensure a better quality of life for present and future generations. We work with communities to implement effective land use planning and policies that prevent waste and stop sprawl, provide efficient transportation choices, create affordable housing and strong local businesses, and ensure healthy natural systems. The mission of the Pilchuck Audubon Society, which is our local chapter of National Audubon that reaches through Snohomish County and Comeno Island, is to conserve and restore natural ecosystems, focusing on birds and other wildlife for the benefit of the earth's biological diversity. Pilchuck Audubon Society has been the umbrella for the Smart Growth Program since 1992 with its inception, right after the Growth Management Act was adopted to be involved in the comprehensive planning processes for Snohomish County. And that work that I do, we strive for more livable, sustainable urban communities and protection of our resource and rural lands, our air and water quality, and wildlife habitat through education, outreach, activism, and advocacy. So, I also, working for those two organizations, I've worked for Futurewise for 13 years and Pilchuck Audubon for, since, for, oh, 10 years. I started the Livable Snohomish County Coalition, and I did that because there were so many people out there in our county, and this is a huge county, that have concerns about growth and development and environmental impacts that have been going on since, you know, growth certainly started taking place, you know, 20, 25 years ago in our region. And I formed this group so that they would have a way to network and talk with each other and get to know what's going on in other parts of the county besides their own little neighborhoods. I also, I also am on the city's brownfield committee, working to figure out how to restore some of our brownfields and have them ready for redevelopment. I also am on the Everett Station District Alliance, which is a new organization that started last year. Mr. Tisdale's on that, and that planner, I know your name. Anyway, he's on it, Fred Brown here in the audience, he's on it. It's a stakeholder group started by Ed Peterson of Hope Works to try to find ways to actually have more, better redevelopment of the Everett Transit Station, bring in more mixed-use residential transit-oriented development, and bring in more connectivity of that area into other parts of the city. And I also serve on the Local Integrating Organization Committee, which Karen served, is the facilitator of at the county. And I also serve on the Sustainable Land Strategy, which is a group that was started by Snohomish County that includes farmers and the tribes and myself, trying to find win-wins for both farmland preservation and salmon habitat preservation. So, I am very active in my community at all levels, and I just wanted to give you that little brief about me, which will might give you some, you know, heads up about why I'm here. So, I just wanted to talk a little bit about your comprehensive plan update. I don't know how much time I am given. Is there a timeline, three, okay. So, I'll just be really short here. As you probably know, the Snohomish County Council just last week adopted their comprehensive plan update, and they picked their Alternative One, which is in alignment with your Alternative One. And the reason they did that, and we are very supportive of that, very happy, and we are asking you to consider doing the same thing. It's important for the cities and the counties' comprehensive plans to be compliant, because if they aren't, then they have to go through a big reconciliation process at some point through the Snohomish County tomorrow and figure out, you know, why there's discrepancies and what to do about it. That's never occurred in this county before, those kind of differences. So, I'm hoping that Everett won't be that, be that city that does that. We believe that we need to put, we need to plan to put the growth here. We have, this is the city, this is the metropolitan city. It's got, it's got the transit station, a regional transit station, the potential for sound transit three, which we will be working on, and if it gets on the ballot, actually campaigning to make sure that the voters voted in. We, you know, you have the hospitals, you're going to have, you know, Washington State University is building here. We need to make Everett a vibrant, wonderful city, and in 20 years, it could be that. It could be that before then, but certainly in 20 years, it can be that. It needs to be that. It needs to house more people. We need to stop sprawling out into our urban growth areas where we have lack of infrastructure. Roads are hurting, and that just pushes out those urban growth areas faster onto our rural lands and onto our resource lands. So, please consider Alternative One, and I would be happy to talk more about it to you at any time. So, thank you.
All right. We have two other people who have signed up to speak tonight. Alex Lark. Your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Alex Lark. I live in, at 1751 Belodgeet Road, Mount Vernon, Washington. Soon, hopefully, to be Everett. I'm working on that. I'm trying to get down here. Move, I want to move to this wonderful city. It's, and I'm actually, I'm very excited to be here tonight, and I noticed the, throughout the evening, a lot of discussion of my generation in the urban planning, millennials. And I also noticed that I am, in fact, I'm fairly confident I am the only millennial here. And if the, I apologize in advance if this is like pings of naivete and sounds a little bit like Jimmy Stewart from Mr. Smith Goes to Washington, but I would very much like to offer my services to any board commission here to get a millennial perspective. I saw, I heard so many things in this presentation that interested me, and I, you know, I would like to offer whatever resources, as humble as they may be, to this. So, that is really all I came to offer, say, and as a person who has lived in Asia, Europe, and on the East Coast for many years, I have a diverse background of urban experiences. So, I'd like to offer that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Fred Brown.
My name's Fred Brown. I live at 2008 Hoyt Avenue in Everett. I've lived there for about a year and a half. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, I thank you for your service to our community. I'm a building designer and reside at 2008 Hoyt Avenue in Everett. I am currently working in full partnership with an owner of property located in the Everett Station area and serving on an ad hoc committee named the Everett Station District Alliance, a committee comprised of a diverse group of stakeholders. As I see it, the challenges in general before all of us are compliance with the, compliance with and achievement of the Everett UGA growth target recently established by Snohomish County, and increasing housing density per acre yields well above the 150, 160 levels that were displayed tonight, with the goal of creating development viability that will ignite private investment, allowing the city to meet the mandated growth targets inside the Everett UGA. In the coming months, I plan to be before the commission and discuss these issues as they directly affect me and my project at the Transit Center, as well as the rest of the city I now call home. Thank you very much.
All right. Those are the only slips that I have from people who have signed up to speak. If anybody else in the audience would like to speak, now's your opportunity tonight. But as you've heard from, from Mary, there will be opportunities later on this summer regarding the comprehensive plan, and more information will be available in the future too. So, all right, thank you. So, turning my attention to planning commissioners. So, we've heard some very good presentations. Anybody have any comments or questions right now? Commissioner Tisdale?
So, Alan, what, what, what kind of communication was there between the county and the city on them choosing Alternative One and your Alternative Two?
We did have some personal conversations with the county council chairperson about the growth targets. That was myself and Pat McLean from the mayor's office, met with Councilman Summers and explained to him why we didn't think that the higher growth targets were realistic, kind of referring back to that chart that I showed you with the building permits as one example, and felt that also, one of the factors that will determine how much growth actually occurs in Everett is the capacity for growth in other communities within Snohomish County. And the county, in order for everybody to be pretty much in alliance with the regional growth strategy and the numbers of the Vision 2040 Plan, in order for the county to be consistent with those numbers, they'd actually have to downzone areas that are in the unincorporated part of Snohomish County and reduce capacity, because the regional growth strategy suggests that unincorporated areas should have less population than even current plans that were already adopted prior to Vision 2040 being updated, provided for. And while we didn't agree necessarily with the regional growth strategy with that type of a, an action to require downzoning in already adopted plans that preceded Vision 2040, we certainly don't agree that our number is achievable without those kinds of reductions, because, especially in areas where there are green fields or undeveloped properties, it's much easier, much more attractive to developers to build in those areas than in Everett where they have to buy buildings and tear them down before they can begin to build at higher densities. Redevelopment is much more unpredictable as to the timing and to the densities that will be achieved. And so, we felt that the county's numbers or expectations for us were extremely unrealistic in light of their lack of willingness to decrease capacity in the unincorporated areas. So, we feel that there's just too much capacity elsewhere within Snohomish County for the higher growth targets to be realistic in Everett.
And on the transportation choices, I guess this would go to Mary, in where we saw bike paths and walkways and that stuff, does that include a bridge or a tunnel or some mechanism to get the folks from the east side to the west side of Broadway as the main arterial through town, whether it be down by the college or Everett Station or?
Commissioner Tisdale's referring to some maps. We looked at the Everett Station District Alliance meeting, a consultant, architects had group here. They're doing some phone work for the group that looked at connections, and if I, I'd have to go back and look at the Everett Station area plan that's already been adopted, but I thought it had a connection at Wall Street, but I am not positive about that. We haven't stated anything specifically in the comp plan update except for a, as we need to provide those good connections to, between Everett Station area and the dam.
And a connection would, would that, does that word mean that there would be some mechanism to get folks across Broadway safely as the main arterial?
Yes, definitely.
And I wasn't, I'm not saying you're wrong, I wasn't saying just there, but I know also down with WSU going in and, and all of that, getting the students back and forth, I know is a, so that was my question, but I think you answered it.
And an example, I think the Broadway Bridge Construction Project is going to include new bike and head crossing across Broadway. I think that's at California, is that at California Street? So, that's, you know, one new action, and you could see similar types of improvements at other locations.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Jordison?
Yeah. So, in terms of the, the growth numbers and the alternatives one, two, and three, I was, you know, I think a couple of years ago, I was even inclined to agree with the position that I'm hearing from the city staff, that, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't shoot so high. And I wouldn't have questioned the wisdom or the, you know, the virtue of that. But after a couple of years and being able to think about it, and, and especially when I hear about development of greenfield sites and expanding into capacity that we have elsewhere in the county, and urban sprawl, that kind of has me thinking about, you know, to me, that's synonymous with consumption of undeveloped land, destruction of natural habitats, you know, the loss of biodiversity, and, you know, in my mind, that it seems to be sort of, you know, in my, we should be attempting to concentrate the growth in the urban areas and not developing, you know, greenfield sites is, you know, that's like the big no-no as far as sustainable design and in terms of climate change. You never want to develop a greenfield site because we have so few of them left. And whether it's inside the, inside the city limits or outside the city limits, out in the county, I would, I wouldn't support anything that would actually encourage developers to pursue those properties in lieu of possible redevelopment of urban properties or industrial sites that have maybe require some demolition or some cleanup. And as far as getting to a number of 165,000, I feel pretty certain that we will get there. You know, it might not be 10 years, or it might not be 50 years, or it might be 100 years, but eventually, we will get to that number. And, and in terms of light rail, you know, I feel sure that at some point, light rail will get to Everett. You know, it may not be in 2035, but it will get here eventually. So, having said all that, it, it would seem to me that it would behoove us to plan for those eventualities, to take a position to say, well, it's just not going to happen by this period of time, so we're just not going to deal with it. It certainly does present some challenges for the city, but it's not as if the city has to go out and build the infrastructure for it and then, so that it can happen. It kind of happens sort of in a, in a, sort of simultaneously as the development occurs. You know, the, the infrastructure will follow, or, well, it'll precede it, but usually, it's on the, the onus is on the developers to provide that upgrade to the infrastructure as it occurs. Now, granted, we would have to invest in some, some things like, you know, increased capacity for stormwater, increased capacity for sanitary sewer and wastewater treatment, but those are not insurmountable. Now, it sounds like when you say, okay, 1,000, 1,100 units per year for the next 20 years, that sounds like a pretty daunting number, but each year that goes by, and as the population increases, that number becomes a smaller and smaller fraction of that, that overall total. So, you know, I doubt that it would be, you know, 1,000 the first year and 1,000 the second year. It might be a few hundred, you know, for the first couple of years, and then it might be a couple thousand to follow that. So, and as far as the financial analysis, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bet the farm on any financial analysis, to be honest with you. I just don't, you know, when I see, when I go to South Lake Union and I see what they're building there, you know, and the, the high-rise buildings are just popping up like mushrooms, you know, I just don't, you know, however, if, if there's a viable way to do it, it's going to happen, you know, and there's going to be some developer out there who's going to find a way to do it. So, you know, to my way of thinking, whether it happens in, you know, 20 years or 50 years or 100 years, we should be planning for it. And we should at least be thinking about that, the capacity to, to be able to provide that, that growth within our city limits, within our existing city limits. And yes, the buildings get taller and taller, and it may be hard to city limits. And yes, the buildings get taller and taller, and it may be hard to imagine, you know, 40-story buildings in downtown Everett, but on the other hand, you know, that's, you know, Manhattan was just a village at one time, you know, with a, with a little handful of people there. So, you know, I think that my, my, my vision or my imagination of what, how, how this is all going to come about is, you know, I don't think it's so different. Well, it is, it is different from yours, you know. I think you see that there's going to be growth, but I'm seeing it in a much more controlled, much more confined area as opposed to just a big, giant sprawling suburb, you know. And, you know, you're, I'm from, I'm from California, as you are. You know, you can drive from Orange County to Ventura County, and you'll never leave, you'll never leave town. You're going to be going from one, one, one city to the next, you know, and there just isn't any open, open country left. So I would sure hurt, I would hate to see, you know, that happen in, you know, in our area, where you drive all the way out to Monroe or even out to Sultan, and all you're doing is going from one suburb, suburb and one city to another city, and you're never leaving, you're never leaving the city. You're basically, you won't drive through country and meadows and foothills. You'll just be driving, you know, through a big, giant suburb like Southern California. So that, in my mind, is, is the, is the, is there any benefit, is there any virtue, is there any wisdom to saying, no, we're just going to, you know, we're going to, we're going to dig our heels in and say it's just going to be 140,000. It's not going to be any more than that. Well, if there is, it seems like you feel that there is not, that that, using those higher numbers lacks integrity, is that, you know, and that, that sounds to me like that's what you're saying. And I don't know, if there is not virtue, or if there is not wisdom, is there any benefit to, to using that, that second alternative? So these are the questions that I have, these are the comments that I have, and if you want to respond, that's fine, I, but, you know, I just wanted to express those, those thoughts.
A couple of questions I think I heard in there, and I'll just, a couple of comments. First of all, the greenfield development that I was talking about is going to happen within urban growth areas that are designated by Snohomish County. Those areas are already designated as urban. They are already designated for high urban densities. The county council just increased those densities with their plan adoption while they, at the same time, reduced the targets in those unincorporated areas and shifted the number by about 22,000 more to the city of Everett in target, but they didn't reduce capacities in their own urban growth areas. So those aren't numbers that will dictate sprawl outside of the urban growth areas. Those are numbers, or those are densities that will occur within the unincorporated urban growth area. And nothing that we put in our plan is going to change the designations that the county has put within their own unincorporated urban growth areas. Secondly, I would love to see us be able to realize the growth target they've assigned for us in the right areas and in the right fashion. However, it's just, the economics are just not there for that happening within the 20-year timeframe that we are planning for. You know, maybe in 50 years, we will be 165,000. But in 20 years, with all of the capacity that exists elsewhere within Snohomish County in urban growth areas, it's highly unlikely that the population that the, the county has established in their own plan will come to, to Everett at that rate. And those are, you know, the principal comments I wanted to make, the, the greenfield development is not going to occur outside of urban growth areas. It's in the areas that have already been designated for urban growth by Snohomish County and other cities within Snohomish County.
Good.
Okay. Other planning commission comments? Commissioner Tisdale?
On the affordability piece, you know, that's based off of our demographics. Is that correct? That, the, the city of Everett demographics that you spoke about earlier?
What I spoke about was our household income in the city of Everett compared with the rest of Snohomish County.
Right. And so it would be affordable to that population, that, that income level is, is that correct?
Well, we have to address housing affordability for all income, all segments, economic segments in the community.
But if outside our growth area, the income levels are higher, if I heard you correctly, then our affordability target would be a lesser per month number? Am I?
Not necessarily, and this is something that's a very complex countywide issue, and each community has to provide for the opportunity for affordable housing within their own community. How they define that in each of their comprehensive plans remains to be seen, but it's a countywide issue as far as the requirement for providing affordable housing, and that's under the countywide planning policies. We are providing for probably more than our fair share, if you want to look at it that way. If you want to look at it in a proportion of countywide population, Everett having 15% of it, we provide probably 30% or more of the affordable housing within Snohomish County. We probably don't have to provide as much in order to satisfy any, any targets on a countywide basis. However, for our own community, we know that we do have households that do require more affordable housing.
Right, right. No, and that, so that, that helps me. Then my, my second, and this is trying to analyze this myself, then, is as rents around us continue to go up, and we know from the data from the Economic Alliance, it's 60% of the population of Snohomish County commutes to King County to work every day. I mean, there's already, I think, a pattern of the people are moving, their, their housing is being provided where it's more affordable. So as the region grows in more jobs, not just the 145,000 that's projected in the alternative one, how, how do we preserve or, I mean, the market's the market, and the market's going to do what the market does. I, I understand that, but I'm just, I'm wrangling, trying to figure out how we make sure that the population that needs to be served at that level, but that's not a planning issue, because the market's going to dictate the affordability. Am I?
You're right.
I confusing myself?
No.
Help me, Alan.
It's, it's a very challenging problem, and while we can try to plan and set policies to encourage the development of affordable housing, we don't build it, we don't control the rent, we don't control the purchase prices of, of housing within, in the community. And so the best thing that we can probably do is have incentives, or in some cases, people have suggested mandating an inclusionary type of policy toward affordable housing. In the past, we've resisted that because we wanted to encourage market rate housing and use incentives to create affordable housing. If we mandated all development having to provide a certain percentage of affordable housing, we'd probably discourage a lot of desirable housing development within the community. And so we've used a number of incentives. It's been very successful with the multifamily property tax exemption, a number of projects that have been built or rehabilitated within the city in those tax exemption areas have been at least 20% affordable housing. The new project above the farmer's market will have at least 20% of the 220 units in that building reserved for affordable housing, and that's a result of an incentive, not a mandate.
Right. No, and that's, that's, I mean, Dave explained it to us a couple meetings ago, that we do, Everett does do a good job in that affordability index, and it's just how, but you've answered the question. The, the last question I had was on the, one of your first slides talked about the public meetings, and what was the sentiment about infill in neighborhoods versus apartments in downtown?
Well, we had one of those-
Or was that discussion brought out?
We, we had a couple of those exercises where people get a number of dots, and they get to place them on a map.
Right.
And we had different colored dots for where to encourage growth and housing development, where to, and job development or job growth.
There.
And, and areas to discourage it. And if you'll recall, a lot of people put the dots for encouraging growth in areas like the downtown, like the Evergreen Way corridor, like Broadway, around Everett Community College, around the Everett Station area, around the Everett Mall area, in Southwest Everett for job growth, where people put the dots to discourage additional development and density. It was in existing single-family neighborhoods for the most part, and that was pretty much uniform across the, the map, where there are single-family neighborhoods, people that are established. Then people wanted to protect those neighborhoods from encroachment, from rezoning or incompatible redevelopment, where there are higher-density areas, and particularly areas along our commercial corridors, where frankly, they could use a shot in the arm. People were encouraging redevelopment in those areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. All right. Well, that was our item for this evening. So we're meeting next July?
July 7th will be our next meeting. It'll be on topics other than the comprehensive plan. I haven't put the agenda together yet, but some of the other code amendment related topics that we've discussed will probably be the agenda there. And if, if I could have just one more moment for a separate item when you're done with everything else.
I think we're all set, so go ahead.
Okay. At last month, or last meeting, I mentioned that Dave Conen will be leaving us and going to work for the city of Marysville. I also wanted to point out that Jim Hansen, who's seated in the front row there, will be retiring at the end of the month, and this will be his last planning commission meeting. Jim has done great work for us on a number of efforts, the downtown plan, the Evergreen Way plan. He's been doing a lot of work on the Brownfield program lately, and I will certainly miss Jim and wish him the best in his retirement. And this would appear also to be Dave's last planning commission meeting before he goes to work for the city of Marysville, and we want to thank him for many years of service, and especially in kind of organizing the planning commission schedule and being in charge of that for the 29 years that I've been here and, and countless hours worked and spent in front of this commission and many other boards and commissions as well. We're going to miss both of them and wish Dave the best in his new job and Jim the best in retirement.
Yes. Thank you very much for, both of you, your professional service for all these years. All right.
Let's give him a big hand.
All right. And with that, I believe we're adjourned for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.